Good evening, everybody. We're trying to pay attention to the mics to make sure everybody speaks up. My name is Barb Ferguson. I'm the president of the Holland Area League of Women Voters. I welcome you to tonight's candidate forum. We're proud to offer this opportunity for the voters of the city of Holland to learn more about the individuals who are running for the city council. The League of Women Voters is a strictly nonpartisan organization and encourages informed and active participation in government. The League never supports or opposes any candidates. We do take stands on issues that we have studied. The League is open to all people to become members, both men and women. More information about the League and how to join is on our website. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls. Therefore, we bring you tonight's forum. We have six candidates running for the city council with us tonight. Kim Rowan and Michael Short are running for Ward Four. Benjamin Adama and Devon Shea are running for the Ward Six seat. Michael Schulteis and Ryan Spencer are running for the At-Large seat. Questions for the candidates have been gathered from the public and from our League members through our website and Facebook page. Now, at this time, we ask everyone to please turn off your cell phones and any other electronic communication devices. No cameras or recorders are permitted, other than those authorized by the League. This program will be recorded, it's also being livestreamed, and it'll be available in a few days on our website and on our YouTube channel. The video is the property of the League of Women Voters of the Holland Area. Neither audio nor video clips may be copied, edited, or used for any political advertising or other purposes. We ask the members of the audience to listen respectfully and to refrain from any comments or reactions as the candidates are speaking. There will be an opportunity to applaud the candidates at the end of the forum. Our moderator for tonight's forum is League member and past president Paula Lewison. Paula will outline the format, review the rules, and lead tonight's forum. Paula?
Thank you. Thank you, Barb. Good evening. I'm glad so many of you could join us this evening. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters Holland Area and was received and reviewed by all candidates prior to the forum. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make an opening statement not to exceed one minute. Candidates will speak in alphabetical order first, and then we will rotate order after that. The timekeeper Shirley McClear will hold a card to indicate 30 seconds remaining, and the card indicating "stop" when the time has expired. When time is up, the candidate may finish only that sentence. Following their opening statements, the candidates will be answering written questions submitted by the public and League members. We did receive several questions from the audience tonight, so thank you. Candidates may not make personal attacks or comments about other candidates. Such attempts will be cut short, and as moderator, I manage the forum and reserve the right to close discussion to a question. Each candidate will have up to one minute to respond to the question. We will rotate the person to answer the question. At the end of the questions, each candidate has an opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement in reverse order of the opening statements. Please note that all questions will be directed to all candidates. No questions will be directed to individual candidates. The League of Women Voters Holland Area provides this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are not endorsed nor opposed by the League. Also, the League of Women Voters does not certify any candidate's responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at the forum. You ready? It's real easy to figure out who starts the forum. So the first opening statement will be met. Benjamin?
I am Benjamin Adama. When alphabetical order is used, I usually end up going first. So here we go. My wife, Allison, and I met growing up at Calvary Church on the north side of Holland. We moved to Zambia, Africa, for two years working for a missions organization. We returned to Holland in 2018. In the five years that we have been back in the city, we have grown to a family of eight, with one getting married and one on the way. One of the reasons that we have been drawn to raise our family here is the family culture and accessible public spaces. There is only one current member on city council who has school-aged children. I believe that my position in life gives me a unique voice. I do not have a political agenda or ties to an agenda. I do not wish to speak for, but rather, I commit to reflecting the voices of residents in my ward and the Holland community, grounded for greater good. Holland has a lot of exciting things happening, and I am hoping that you will elect me to be a part of that.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to introduce myself. One minute is very short, so let me get to it. I am an attorney by profession. I've been an attorney for 28 years. I've practiced in private practice, corporate practice. I've lived in many places, practiced in many places. I've represented the very rich and the very poor. I feel like I've seen it all and done it all. So what that means for my role here on city council is that I can listen, learn, and advocate. Listen to my constituents, learn the issues, and advocate their positions. As a city council member, as running for city council, I have not taken any outside money. I've only funded my own campaign. Therefore, I don't listen to, I don't have anybody's agenda in my ear. I'm not funded by machinery. I'm not having talking points by machinery. I'm here to listen, to learn, and to advocate. Holland, get to know me. I'm ready to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Appreciate the public attendance. Look forward to questions, both from the panel and then also out in the lobby afterwards. As a husband and a father, I'm very thankful for Holland's culture of generosity. I think it sets a great example for collaboration and support. I strongly support measured growth and development. Return on investment needs to be strong for our city residents, not just for the development Do not want us to outgrow our infrastructure, and I think that goes along with our development. As a veteran, I understand that divisive leadership disrupts the mission. I think it's important for us to focus on unity as a community. Thank you for the opportunity to earn your vote.
Thank you. Devon?
Thank you. As I was preparing for tonight, I tried to think of a quick little anecdote to share with you that would show how I would be the best candidate. And I realized there isn't just one concise moment, because a lot of what I've experienced thus far has led me to here. I grew up in Holland. I moved away, like any teenager hopes to. Then I returned 10 years later, and I met my wonderful wife, Sarah, and that is when I fell in love with my hometown. I started noticing the things that make Holland unique. I started reading books about city planning and community building. I joined the Zoning Board of Appeals to learn how governance really works on a local level. And I did it because it was fun, believe it or not. So I don't have that concise little anecdote for you, but I am really grateful to be here and look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Hello, and thank you. I'm grateful to the League of Women Voters for including me in this forum. Also, thanks to councilwoman Nikki Arndhorst, who has served faithfully in Ward Four and has elected to step down at this time. Who is Mike Short? He's the husband for 37 years to my loving and late wife, Donna, the father and father-in-law of my daughter and my son-in-law, Ann and John, a Christian, a 30-year Holland resident, a PhD in biological chemistry, an MBA, the pharmaceutical scientist, manager and site leader of quality operations, a professor of chemistry at Hope and GVSU, a pharmaceutical consultant. I want to build a stronger, safer Holland where all can thrive. I commit to protecting your beliefs and respecting your values. I will protect you, the taxpayer, ensure healthy neighborhood growth, and support public safety.
Thank you. Our first question, and just to let you know, I spoke with, oh, I'm sorry, Ryan. Ryan, would you like to share your opening statement?
Thank you, Michael. And to all of you for sticking up for me. I appreciate that. My name is Ryan Spencer. I have, I was an Air Force brat. For the first 12 years of my life, we moved all over the world and experienced many different cultures and experiences. Moved here in 1997 as a 12-year-old boy. Well, I didn't move here. My dad forced us to come here, and that was the best decision that ever happened to us. I met my lovely wife here. We've been together for 25 years, been married for 15, have six beautiful children, live in the Holland Heights area, and I am an entrepreneur at heart. I own a business here in town, have enjoyed the process and pains of growth, and understand that as you grow, you know, decisions, as you grow, they get broader and impact more people. And so I'm excited to be running here. I'm excited to run with Mr. Schulteis. I think your decision is tough, because you have two, I'm not trying to be arrogant here, but two great candidates to choose from, and I respect your position as a Navy vet, and I honor that. And I'm thankful to be here tonight and looking forward to getting to know you guys as well as you getting to know me.
Thank you. We have a lot of questions to get through. We have six people to answer, so I'm going to rush this along when possible. Our first response to the question will be from Kim, and I'll read the question. City council seat is traditionally nonpartisan. Some think that partisanship has crept into our local races. Is this a fair statement? What would you do to address that?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Partisanship, I think, is, it's probably inevitable that it's going to creep in. It is just one of those realities of a political existence in our modern life. But I think that it's worrisome in that partisanship is a label, and a label allows you to maybe assign traits to a candidate or to a movement that may not be accurate. What I think is more important is to listen to what someone's views are, understand the rationale behind their views, and advocate or listen to their position and adopt that position if necessary. So I'd be leery of partisanship. I think it's very healthy to have a nonpartisan city council, and I look forward to being a part of that city council and using that collaborative effort to reach good conclusions and work for the benefit of our town, of our city that we love. It's okay to be a nonpartisan body and work towards good solutions that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thanks. I think that whether partisanship happens or doesn't, I think it's up to the individual voter to understand. But I think what it does when we are nonpartisan is it makes the residents work a little bit harder to understand who we are, what we believe in, and how we see the outcome of the election. So I think it's healthy to remain nonpartisan in the city of Holland. Thank you.
Thank you. Devon?
Yeah, I think that if we really distill it down, we aren't becoming partisan, because that isn't something that's within the scope of work for city council. I think if you're here for the right reason, then you're here to look at issues that are probably not as exciting as partisan issues tend to be. If you're here for the right reason and not here to use it as a platform for something outside of those realities, then, you know, you're not here for the right reason, I would say.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, I think there's been three good answers already, and I don't know much of what I could add to it. But I have been a manager, and I've managed diverse groups, and so, working on the city council, I would work in a nonpartisan manner.
Thank you. Ryan?
Thank you. I've enjoyed, in business, you know, when you're seeking the best ideas, you don't care who's bringing them, you just want to get to them. And so I think partisanship, to Mr. Shea's point, if you're so extreme that you can't listen, then that becomes a problem, and that doesn't push us forward or solve any issues. So I like to sit at the table. I want opposing viewpoints, so that we can get a good, well-rounded view of a subject.
Thank you. Benjamin?
Yeah, I think there's no doubt that the world has become a more partisan place. The world wants headlines. Many of the communities that we operate are echo chambers, so we hear our own opinions expressed over and over, and don't take time to reflect on differences and how we can be stronger through that. I think city council is a unique place, and I, from what I've known from the candidates running here, I think everyone has done a great job to promote the city welfare and remain nonpartisan. We don't deal with issues about immigration. We don't deal with abortion. We don't, those are stuff for big-time politicians. So I really appreciate that about this crew. I think we got a good group here.
Thank you. Second question. What do you think is the number-one infrastructure issue facing Holland? We're going to start with Michael.
This, Michael?
Yes. Mike and Michael.
That's right. I think that movement around the city is the challenge that I hear most consistently from our residents. So it's a challenge when we are growing and developing our areas for the betterment of the community, but with, you know, something to go to means more people want to go there. And so parking and traveling around town can be a challenge. I do appreciate that. I think Max Transit is working right now on multi-year assessment. I want to be a part of that assessment. I think it's important. I came from an area that we were spoiled with public transportation, but I think that that's something that can help our area. And then also just be mindful, I know that we do traffic studies for large developments in the area, and that's something that we'd need to keep doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Devon?
Yeah, thank you. This is where I start to get a little bit into the weeds, because it's so fun to me. Infrastructure's super interesting to me, and I can get pretty heady on it, and then I also am reminded that, by my neighbors, that there's a particular crosswalk that really needs to be addressed. And so I don't know that I have a full lofty goal for our infrastructure. I think we need to be taking it one crosswalk at a time, but I think we do need to really consider our walkability and bikeability, so that we can have alternative ways to get to those things without having to park there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, I have three items, and they're all related to streets. For example, there was an exploding sewer line in Country Club Hills back in the wintertime. Broken driveways seem to be a thing as I walk the neighborhood of Ward Four. People have complained that, as the streets have been repaired, their driveways have been broken, and so they end up with icy driveways at the bottom, because the water melts into that broken space. And then, safety on the streets as well. For example, people on 32nd need to back out of their driveways to get into the lane of traffic, which is moving at 40 miles an hour. And so some of them want parabolic mirrors, and the city has not yet put them up. So those are the issues that I would address at this time.
Thank you. Ryan?
I do believe that the current council and past governance has done a really good job of setting Holland up for success. So I would echo the sentiments of Mr. Schulteis, that movement within the city and some of the projects that we're forecasting could really create a problem there. So I would say that the movement of our vehicles and the movement of our people and the safety involved in that would be paramount.
Thank you. Benjamin?
Yeah, so I have three things, because I'm Christian Reformed, and we always do three things. Growth, I think it's been touched on. Ottawa County is the fastest-growing county in Michigan. From 2010 to 2020, it grew 12 percent. That's not going to stop. It's going to keep going. So we're expecting massive growth, and how do we deal with that being part of Ottawa County? A few things with that, I know Devon talked on infrastructure, affordable housing. We need housings of all types, not just rentals, not just apartments, single-family homes, the whole gamut. And then a huge thing for me is the waterfront. We have an opportunity right now to expand our downtown into the waterfront. What do we want that to look like? Is it going to be something that's going to end up privatized, like much of the city of Holland's waterfront is currently? Or how can we make that accessible to the public? And what do we want that to look like in the future? So I think those are the big things for me. In 2047, Holland will turn 200, and I think it's exciting to dream about what we want it to look like.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. Benefit of being last on this question is that I can point to these gentlemen and say they were all very good answers. There's, I do agree, though, that transportation is one of the issues that I think is kind of higher up on my list. I too came from a city where there was a lot of walkability, mass transportation. It's just such a gift, because it opens up the city for access. I'd love to see a more robust system in place, so that if you don't have a car, you have a safe, reliable means of transportation in and around the city. Of course, a place to park, you might have to walk an extra block. We're growing. But I do think that those are kind of fundamental issues about how you use your city. They affect your everyday life, and they can affect your quality of life in our city. So I would say that that is probably one of my primary areas of interest in infrastructure.
Thank you. Everyone answered that question. The next question is, if someone came to you with a personal proposal to build a new piece of public infrastructure, a road, a bridge, et cetera, how would you evaluate whether or not that project was worth implementing? Going to start with Devon.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. I would first go to every expert I know. And luckily, as a business owner myself, I have a lot of, I'm in the real estate industry, and so I know a lot of people in these types of industries, and that would be a big part. But I'd also want to be talking to, I'd want to be talking to leaders in nonprofits, people that have their boots on the ground or really looking at these things every day, because I will very often not be the expert. So that's going to be the first goal, is gathering a pool of experts.
Thank you. Mike?
If someone came to me proposing to build a new project, what I would do is tell that person to write it up and take it to the city council. That's where it belongs. I'm not an advocate for personal projects.
Thank you. Ryan?
I would agree with most of what is being said here. I think when you're brought something that's not in your field of expertise, I would want to seek out opposing viewpoints and get experts that would disagree with each other to try to dig out the best result and figure out if that's going to be a good move forward or not, so.
Thank you. Benjamin?
Yeah, so I like to look at things through cost and benefit. So who is it benefiting? Is it benefiting a business that we're bringing in? Then they should probably take on a significant portion of that cost. Is it benefiting the public? Then maybe that's something the city needs to invest in. A cool thing about city council is city council makes some of these directional decisions on behalf of the constituents. We don't run the operations. Me and Devon aren't going to get in a truck and snowplow. I hope not. We have great teams already in place that do that every day, and that is their job. That's why we have a city manager. That's why we have roles in place. So yeah, I think bringing it through the processes that are already involved, looking at cost and benefit, and then letting our team do what they're good at.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. Every time. Thank you. I think some of these, some of my position has already been articulated by these gentlemen, but I do think, you know, my mantra is sort of listen, learn, and advocate. So listen to the idea, maybe learn a little bit about it, and then advocate. Maybe that advocacy looks like pointing somebody in the right direction, where they can channel that idea for further development. It's good to, you know, to be able to have that one-on-one interaction with your city council person, so they can hear your ideas. But it isn't the job of the one single city council person to run with that idea and make it into a law or provide massive change. It's their, it might be their job to help you shepherd that idea through its appropriate development. So I guess in that way, I would just sort of direct somebody to where that idea might have the most juice, and then if it's something really fabulous, we'll all be behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
So what I like about this is that I would be one-ninth of the help that somebody might be seeking for a development project. I think it's important for projects that are proposed to run the process, right? So seek more information, find out what the community sentiment is about the development. I really appreciate how City Hall uses study sessions, and the planning commission is open forums for our residents to come and speak specifically about plans and let their voices be heard. But definitely run the process.
Thank you. Our next question is, describe your qualifications related to budgets and policies and your engagement in local government. Please be specific about your public service on committees, commissions, and/or attendance at council meetings. The first question goes to Mike.
Qualifications. Well, I was a site leader of quality operations at the Zeeland Mead Johnson Plant. As far as budget, I have a lot of numbers here with me today. I've got an MBA. I know how to read financial sheets. Let me just give you an example. In 2018, the budget was $29,960,000, and it had been flat from 2014. By 2024, the budget had grown to $30,586,000, growing at 6.4% per year. With those numbers, I can give you many more, but just take it that I understand numbers. I'm good at them.
Thank you. Ryan?
So having been an entrepreneur for the last seven and a half years, actually, prior to that, I had failed a business and then got into my next business, and that's been a success. So through growth, we have, I think there's a couple things that happen. When you're managing budgets and you're making decisions for how your business or the city's going to grow, there's a, there's reputation that's involved in the growth. So I think as we look at budgets and as we look at the character and the reputation of our city, those have to coexist together. My business has won Torch Award for Ethics from the Better Business Bureau. We've won at least five different excellence awards for how we've managed and run our business, and so I think all those things work together. And while this is a much larger scale, I think that principles apply, so.
Thank you. Benjamin?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess a little bit about my past. I worked for industrial control and automation, kind of in the manufacturing world, before going to Zambia, Africa. There, I was the onsite, on-ground director there, dealing with managing people, managing money. I currently work for Merle Boost Incorporated, working with wholesale lubricants, factories, mechanic shops, that type of world. As far as activities, so my parents, from an early age, wanted us to be involved in the community, learn how politics work. In high school, we would, I was homeschooled at the time, so we would come and work election polls all throughout college, get in, engaged, knowing how the process works. On my church, I'm on the Global Missions Team, approving budgets for the different organizations that we support. And in our community, neighboring is what our family does. Thanks.
Thank you. Kim? Kim?
Thank you. Part of my previous work experience, my work life, I was corporate counsel for a printing company in Wisconsin. I also served on the board of that company. Most recently, I've served on the board of the local yacht club here. I'll require you to read a balance sheet. Thankfully, there's a lot of help here on... Here in the city. There's a lot of wonderful resources. I certainly understand how numbers move around. But more importantly, public policy. When making public policy, making public expenditure decisions, that's a different mindset than an entrepreneur. You really need to encapsulate what's best for a large group of people with very diverse backgrounds. It isn't a one-size-fits-all like it might be for a corporation. And also, you have to work with a body that has to pass legislation, even for spending or for any other thing that comes along. So it's more of a wide knowledge base and consensus building in order to affect like an appropriate policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Fortunately, there are no specific qualifications required. But the question is really about experience and proficiency. So as a member of the inaugural Civic Center Place Board, we had been specifically challenged with budget management since the building was first refurbished. Then entering into a pandemic on a new-use building, now exiting a pandemic, and making sure that we are being fiscally responsible with the taxpayer dollars that are subsidizing the use of that building. So the last two years, we have reduced that subsidy consecutively. We're on target to do it again in the next fiscal year. But then, more importantly, is it as a leader, it's not on one member of the council to be the budget guru, but instead to draw out the strengths of the team, acknowledge the weaknesses, and work together to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible with the taxpayer dollars. Thanks.
Thank you. Devin?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. I... It's kind of a two-parter. And I'll say I am a business owner. All my employees are making more money than they did before, and I'm proud of that. And we keep everything in the black. I am on the zoning board of appeals, and I have been for a few years. And that's been a really great opportunity to kind of cut my teeth and understand how the system works. But I also want to echo what Mr. Schulz says, and that is finding the strengths and weaknesses within the group is really key. And so, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question. Besides infrastructure issues, what do you see as a top issue facing the city? How have you engaged with City Hall or local residents to address these issues? Ryan?
So I think we're a divided city currently. Not terribly. I don't think there's people throwing things at each other and hating. But we definitely... We see things differently inside the city. And what I'm noticing is that, for instance, a good friend of mine lived in Holland for quite some time, she says, "I fear to live out my faith." And I think that's a indictment on us as a culture, you know? We have Dr. Van der Althe. I've been reading his... He had a very courageous man that lived out his faith and was somewhat maverick in his approach. But he brought people together and established a community where we could all speak at the table and have understanding even through our differences. And I think that's an issue that we have in our city. And I hope to solve that by welcoming all to the table.
Thank you. Benjamin?
Yeah, I think the top issue facing the city, I would have to go with waterfront. I think there are issues that we don't see as top of the list because they're doing... Done extremely well. I think of public safety in that aspect and the great police force that we have. But for me, right now, it's waterfront. I think we have one shot to get this right that will last and make an impact for the next 100 years. And I really want to see that done right. It kills me that we can't go to the south side lighthouse and that we're so close to the water, but yet so far away. And we have Collins Park and we have all this. And yeah, I think we got to get it right. We got to get it right. And I think especially for families like mine that want to live here for a long time and grow up, and we love this community. I'm passionate about it.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. I think some of the previous answers, you know, we've got a couple broad scopes of this. But I think the larger picture of maybe what both of you gentlemen are saying is that we're looking at growth. I mean, Holland is enjoying a beautiful moment of growth. It's a great city. I think we're all here for different reasons. But I think one of the fundamental reasons we all love it is it's this small town in the very best way, but with access and opportunity for larger things. We're attracting some larger businesses to the area. That is going to be a beautiful, delicate balance of figuring out how do we achieve the needs of growth while still keeping what's very special and fantastic about this place that we all call home. And we want to preserve what's beautiful about it while still creating economic opportunity for us and for the generations of the young people that live here going forward. So I think that is going to be very challenging. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, thanks. I think that the challenge would be housing opportunities. So I don't put that as infrastructure because it's market-driven. So the market will determine what works for a family to afford and what doesn't work. I think that it's important to note that affordable is different for every family, right? So I think that you need a diverse spectrum of housing opportunities throughout the city. And I think that from a city standpoint, it'd be important for us to continue ushering projects like Vista Green and the Collin Park Housing Development Projects through the process to help them maintain a diverse spectrum of affordable housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Devin?
This is a great question, and it's a tough one to answer. I began this whole experience of mine diving into this with meeting with leaders and directors of different nonprofits. I spent five weeks at an affordable housing cohort and speaking with folks from... That are doing awesome work in that area. And I think that that's a really big part, and I echo what Mr. Schulz said just now. I also think that increased engagement and representation is really important and really feeling... Making sure that nobody feels like they are left out and that their voices are heard. So I'd like to reach out to those folks.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, I'm seeing the major issue is protecting you, the taxpayer, to keep the city solvent. Let me just share a number again with you, okay? I project that by 2030, the budget will be $44 million for this city, okay? Property tax revenues are the biggest portion of our general operations budget. For example, in 2014, it was $15,532,000. In 2022, it was $17,751,000. Expenses in 2014 were $22 million. Expenses in 2022 were $32 million and a half. That means that other revenues, such as fund transfers and grants, had to increase 100 percent because property taxes are not keeping up with revenues, with spending.
Thank you. The next question is, what kinds of policies, if any, will you pursue to promote social and racial justice in our community now that there is a non-discrimination policy in place? We start with Benjamin.
Yeah. So yeah, the anti-discrimination policy was... Ordinance was passed to reflect the national and statewide sexual religion, your weight, from discriminating on any of those things. To my knowledge, there has not been one complaint under that ordinance. I think it's an ordinance that we as Holland need to have because that's a value that we have. But I do think Holland's a great, great place to live. I think promoting heritage and cultural that more reflects Holland is important to me. 38 percent of Holland is Latino. I think it would be cool to have a Latino fest or something that kind of goes alongside of tulip time. So I think pursuing some of those lines that keeps it positive and encourages.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. The question is, what kinds of policies would I pursue? And I guess whenever you talk about pursuing a policy, I think you need to understand first, why do we need it? And then maybe consider, do we already have it? I think those questions are, we already do have it. Why do we need it? I mean, I don't know that we need to have... Create more policy to try to direct how people think, breathe, sleep, react, to change someone's mindset. I think that the Constitution does a beautiful job of allowing for freedom of speech. And I think that we can probably find redress to any infractions under the Constitution and bring any action that might step on someone's toes under free speech. And so I don't really support finding new ways of telling people how to think. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I don't think that it gets a policy question, but there's no policy answer for it. If we remember, the anti-discrimination policy, it didn't change the way that City Hall conducted business. It acknowledged importantly that the city of Holland will follow state and federal rules for how discrimination is applied. And that was a smart thing to do. But I think it's more a question of culture. So I think it's important that City Hall and the representatives set an example of how we live together so that others follow suit. If City Hall becomes divisive, then there's no doubt that our community would follow suit. So I think that it bears a lot of responsibility on the council members. Thanks.
Thank you. Devin?
Yes, thank you so much. That's... This is something that's really important to me. I think that we as a city, we might... Unfortunately, we have been doing a really good job of acknowledging our diversity and giving voice to those people. But we unfortunately might have to step up. There's been a chilling effect that I've been hearing from different minority groups, from things happening elsewhere in the county. And we need to make sure that we are being as inclusive as possible to all types of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
It's a difficult question, okay? As a Christian, I have beliefs that aren't consistent with the whole world. However, Paul tells us in Corinthians, he tells us that we put people out of our congregation, but we don't put people out of the world, okay? The discrimination ordinance protects sexual orientation. I can accept that. It needs to protect Christians who are in business. And I think there was an amendment proposed, but it was talked down. So I would like to bring that amendment back if I'm on city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
So I don't think there's any better policy than loving your neighbor as yourself. And I think it's something that requires each of us to take action. I don't think your city government is going to solve a problem that is in your neighborhood with you and your... I had a couple examples of this. I was out knocking doors early on in the year, and someone had an issue with the amount of chickens that they had in their backyard, and they wanted to be able to have more. And they thought that city government should be able to step in there. And I thought, well, wouldn't it be great just to go to your neighbor, knock on the door, have real conversation, and solve the problem together as a group versus having... Always pushing the problem off on government? So I'm a big proponent of each of us being great individually. And collectively, we'll naturally be great. I had a situation where I was asked for some money to help someone pay their mortgage. And I struggled with that internally. I thought, well, why are you asking me for money? But then my Christian heritage, God told me, "I brought them to you to help them, so do it." And I did it. And I'm thankful that I did. And I think that speaks to the way that Hollanders act amongst each other. And I think if we can bring that back on a large scale, we'll really turn the city around. And everyone will feel welcomed and included.
Thank you. Next question. How will you consider climate change and other environmental issues in economic development? We're going to start with Kim.
Thank you. Climate change, I mean, it is just the elephant in the room for growth all over the world, all over the country. I think that, you know, this is not a city council question unto itself. It's very much larger. We can take steps to make sure that new businesses that are growing here in Holland are doing their level best to reduce their carbon footprint, to do all the responsible things and not adding to the problem. Obviously, we're not going to solve it at city council. It's regional, state, federal, worldwide. It's planet Earth. We're all concerned about it. But we obviously have limitations, but we can do our best to make sure that there is a responsible level of growth and responsibility. And I guess that starts right here in Holland with the city in how we manage even just how our body operates. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
I think the question is primarily about how do we take care of our city and the city's environment. And I think if you take a look at Holland BPW's long-range plan, you'll see a lot of great items in there that are helping us remain energy diverse in pursuing more over time. If you're not aware, the snowmelt system makes our power plant run more efficiently. So not only does it take snowplow trucks off the road, right, less carbon, but it also makes our power plant run more efficiently. Then we got to continue ushering smaller ideas. If you think about the amount of recycling that has been put in place for the last couple of years because of our blue and orange trash cans, it's a huge number. It's fantastic. It's taking care of our city and the environment. And also the anaerobic digester down at the water treatment facility. Those types of things are going to help us take care of the city and its environment for the long term.
Thank you. Devin?
Thank you. Simple, yet complicated. For Holland's children and their children and their children, we need to be doing everything we can. So does the federal government. So does the state government. So does every individual family, every individual. We can't afford to not be looking at it. We also can't solve it all. But I like to look to things like, you know, native grass gardens and things like that that can help with the watershed and things, keeping the water clean and that type of thing. But we need to be looking at all options, and we need to diversify as much as possible, which I am very proud of Holland for doing so with their energy plan thus far.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. Climate change is a difficult subject because at the federal level, decisions are being made. At a local level, do we want to be making the decisions that would rush ahead of the federal level? For example, if we were to eliminate fossil fuels by 2030, we would also eliminate the cars that we drive because we can't have plastics anymore. The petrochemical industry supplies all of the plastics that are used in the cars. There's so much more to climate change than what people want to study. And there are discrepancies in the climate change data. I'll just indicate that I am for preservation of the waterfront and all of the waterfront, the Maquette Tower area watershed, 176 tributaries. They feed into Lake Mac, and I want to see that protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Of course, I would have to follow that. Excellent. I look at climate change as a stewardship issue. And while we can hover around at the federal level and the state level, you and I have a part to play in this. And I think of climate change as really just stewardship of what we've been given. So when I first saw that blue and orange dumpster... So when I first saw that blue and orange dumpster roll into my driveway, I thought, what is this leftist propaganda bucket, you know, doing in my driveway? And once I swallowed my pride and actually considered what was, what this was being put in place to do, I thought, why would I not engage in something so simple as putting my cardboard into that container versus my trash can? Such a simple act. And, and I began to do it, and now I fill that thing up almost every other week. And because my wife loves to order things online, and there's boxes at my house every single week, so now they've got a place to go. So I do, I applaud Mayor Box and the City Council for implementing that, and that's been a small step forward in doing our part as individuals, so.
Thank you. Benjamin?
My, my issue is my teenage daughter's put in cardboard pizza boxes in the recycling. Trying to convince them, hey, those can't go in there. I remember earlier this year, a report came out about recycling and what percentage was actually useful and what percentage actually went back into the landfill. Mike probably knows the exact number, so I'll ask him afterwards. I, I think one big thing that isn't talked about enough is just using less. The greatest way to take care of our environment is to pass clothes down to, to not buy as much, to, to use less. So I think that's a, a strategy that the city could take as well. A couple things that Mr. Schulte touched on that I just wanted to echo. The digester, which is the, the big ball at the poop plant, will eat up a lot of that sludge that used to go to farmers' fields, but farmers don't want it because of PFAS. And then it used to go to the landfill, but landfills don't want it because it creates unstable soil conditions. The goal is to eat that up and maybe someday be able to use it, pelletize, to fertilize your, your lawn. How cool is that? Someone's a genius. It's probably Mike's brother or something, so.
Thank you. The next question. Our community is proud of our first responders, but there are issues with every community. What do you see as the most pressing issues with the police and fire departments? Michael?
I'm happy to plead ignorance, so I'm not aware of any large communicated or perceived issues with our police force or fire department. I think they do a, a good job. I appreciate the, the reports on our police force, is that they treat people with dignity and respect, so we're not reading about them in the news for not doing so. I enjoy hearing fire engine sirens run by my house any time of the day. I do have a seven-year-old, he can sleep through it now, it's great. But they're on it, they respond quickly, and they're doing the right things for the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Devin?
Thank you. It's a very good question. I think first and foremost, if anybody does have problems with these groups, I would love to facilitate a healthy discussion if, if individuals have had poor experiences. But like Mr. Schulte says, I, I haven't heard of, of a lot. But for me, AEDs, it's easy, and my father lived through a heart attack recently because of an AED and because of compression-only CPR, and I really would like to see AEDs in the public and increasing CPR training. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. I'm aware from a resident of the city that there is an issue with police safety. Actually, it might be crisis intervention. And that issue relates to children, parents of children in the historic district. There are now a growing number of people milling around at Collin Park, at Centennial Park, and at the library. So with those sorts of situations, is a crisis intervention team sufficient for all of those situations? The concern of parents like that is the safety of their children.
Thank you. Ryan?
I agree. We have, we have some of the best first responders, and our, our group is solid. So I, I don't know that there's a, an overhaul that needs to happen on any one specific thing. However, whenever you rise to the top and you're, you're great, the only person left to beat is yourself. So I think we, we continue to invest in education, we continue to push the latest and greatest of technology, of ways of dealing with people, education on, on those fronts, just to keep us great. I don't think there's anything we need to necessarily do. To Mr. Short's point, yes, we are seeing a larger homeless population, we are seeing more congregating and sticking around. My wife and I have dealt with that right across the street from our home, and it is, it's concerning. As a parent with six children, you don't want to feel, I grew up in a Holland where I just got on my bike and rode, I didn't even think about it. Today, we think about it. We think about where our girls are at. Can they play in the front yard, or should we keep them in the backyard? And do I think that's a police and, and fire issue? Not necessarily, but it is something that's, it's an issue that's growing in Holland, so.
Thank you. Benjamin?
Yeah, so I think our police and fire department does a great job. I think the city's pouring resources into them. If you've seen the new fire station going up on Waverly, that's pretty, pretty exciting, and there's plans for Collins Park to, to be revitalized as well. A couple issues that were touched on, homelessness, I think is a, a tough one for officers to know how to deal with. I think partnering with nonprofits who are really good at it and, and know how we can best serve that population is important. I think human trafficking and just assessing what are we doing to make sure that human trafficking doesn't find a home in Holland as well. My brother is a police officer in Los Angeles. He thinks we have it pretty easy here, I don't know why. But I, I like to think about things that are proactive to keep people from getting in those situations. So I'm excited about the ice rink that's going in, I'm excited about waterfront opportunity. I hope that there's a place where kids can get three-dollar ice cream cones instead of twenty-dollar drinks, and, and giving teens and, and people places and things to do that are productive.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. I too am not aware of a particular problem regarding first responders. What I can say about, so my, my current work is that I represent the mentally ill in civil commitment hearings after I'm appointed by the probate court. So I do see the work that first responders are doing from that indirect space. They are intercepting folks that might be causing a disturbance because they're mentally ill, because they're not, they're not medicated, and they deliver them to hospitals, shelters, and so on. I appreciate that these folks are in the community, these responders are in the community, they can easily, quickly identify some of the faces that are known to them, and they do a yeoman's work, and it's valuable. I think that maybe one day we can get the level of resources and creativity to really give more social service assistance to our first responders. I think more and more across the country, they're being asked to fill so many roles. So in the meantime, we'll give them an attaboy and keep on truckin' and make sure that we support our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is, are there any ways that you would like to change how City Council and City of Holland conducts itself? If so, why? If not, why not? The first question goes to Devin.
Thank you. I follow along with a lot of this stuff. I, I watch all the council meetings, and I know I am in the minority. But the truth of the matter is that we, the, the folks up here are operating at a really high efficient level, a high level of excellence. They are all very honest, everything is done above board, and that is something that we cannot take for granted. We are very fortunate, and we need to continue that. And I just again want to reiterate and thank the current folks on council because they all do an incredible job.
Thank you. Mike?
I'll have to get elected to City Council to decide whether or not there are things that need to change, okay?
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, the, our City Council is just amazing. I was having breakfast with one of our council members the other day, and he talked about when he first got on council, how he and another council member had some beef because they, they don't all think alike, and that's a good thing. And, and so they solved that issue together, and today they're best friends. And I think that's, that's Holland. That's what we are. We don't allow our individual platforms to, and ideologies to divide us. They don't necessarily, we don't necessarily change each other, but we learn how to work together, and I think the council is just absolutely phenomenal at doing just that, so.
Thank you. Benjamin?
Yeah, like what others said, I, I think we have a great city, that's, that's why I want to live here. The City Council has a charter, which is essentially the constitution for how they operate. I think that's really important. I do feel bad for the mayor because his term is only two years, ours will be four. I can't imagine doing my job for eighteen months and then running again. I think one issue that I, I would like to bring up on City Council is, is just the civic center. The city's committed five hundred thousand dollars for revitalizing that place every year, and I think it looks beautiful. On top of that, though, it is losing one point three million dollars a year in operational cost. That's a big load on the city. I think either those doors need to be open a lot so that I can visit, because a lot of times I try to go there on Saturday and it's, it's locked during farmer's market. Or we need to figure out how to make it profitable so that it, it doesn't weigh on the city budget.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. I think I'm going to go back and echo what Devin said. I think that our City Council operates at such a high level. I think that the level of dedication for these folks giving of their spare time, aside from their regular first, you know, daytime jobs, it's extraordinary. I've also been told in, in my experiences that the city government, the, the folks that make the wheels turn here in the City of Holland are doing an excellent job. I think that they are constantly trying to process and improve how they operate as a city, how they operate as a body, and they get stuff done. So I don't have anything that I want to change. Maybe after I'm elected to City Council, I'll find something, but I applaud the effort and the dedication of the fine folks that are on council, the mayor, and the folks that run this government. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Broken record. So what I appreciate about the current City Council is that they're open, they're thoughtful, they're candid, and they're transparent. I think those are aspects that, once you take them for granted, they will be lost, and it will be difficult to, to get back to them. So I think that that's a strength that I would bring to council, is to ensure that those remain. Also, I think that it's important that City Council continues to remain self-critical, set in a variety of City Hall meetings where they are critical of themselves as to what they could have done better. I think that's a vital component to how our city government works. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question is long, and it'll start with Mike, so I'm giving you a heads up so you can listen. Holland residents voted in May to approve a land sale and swap on the waterfront around the old power plant. No specific site plan has been presented to the planning commission by the developer, although council was presented earlier with a broad vision. What do you hope to see done with this area?
This is one of the, one of the issues that a lot of citizens are concerned about, the waterfront and how it will be developed, okay? We have a proposal on the table from one developer. There were three that were selected, but only one delivered a proposal. The transfer that I understand will take place is a transfer between BPW property and Verplank property. That's all that's been approved at this time, so City Council has a lot of work to do in the future, and at this time, it's too soon to speak to what it will look like.
Thank you. Ryan?
For a guy that lives in the Holland Heights, I love the idea of the development of the waterfront. That being said, I don't live across the street, and so the direct impact of that, I, I am more interested in listening to what people that live in close proximity to that have to say. On the upside, I mean, it's going to draw additional revenue and, and help us to continue to work towards, you know, having, funding our budget and making sure we're solvent and all that. There's a tension, I think, between those interested involved in the project. While the current proposal is still just that a proposal, we can assume it is not far off from what the intentions are with the property. I think it's super important that we get this right, and I applaud the council for taking the time. I mean, I've heard years is the word I've heard, to figuring out the best plan for this. I applaud those, those efforts because we've got to get this right. If we mess this up, it's, it could be devastating, you know?
Thank you. Benjamin?
Yeah, I like this topic. So there's a couple things that I think City Council does have to take into consideration. One that, as a community member, I don't necessarily like is that the City of Holland, their control over income really relates and boils down to property taxes. So I, I do understand some of the, the commercial and private development proposals from growing your tax base. I think what I really want to see is open dialogue that's community-driven, that gives the people of Holland what they want and that they feel listened to. And, and I don't think this process needs to be rushed, I think we can take time. Personally, I'd love to see a Marina there. I'd love to see a place where we can go and walk, maybe a little park. But, but what I really want is the community to be heard and to get something that benefits the residents here.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. I was a, I was in favor of the land deal, I definitely supported it. I know we all had a chance to vote on it. I think I too have heard that that process, even for that component of it, was years in the making. If, and, and I expect that the development of this property will also be years in the making, and there will be plenty of opportunity for input, so I urge everybody to get involved, make sure it's something that you like, you agree with, and if not, make your voices heard. I do think that I, I would, I want to see us follow that very specific process of collecting ideas, making sure that everyone is heard. I'll give one huge point already to the, to the proposal and to what's already been enacted, is that it takes some of that heavy truck traffic away, and I think that already is a win. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
So personally, I don't have a desired outcome for the Marina project. We have to understand that this is a long-haul project. This is going to be multiple years, and so community members, we need to be engaged for a marathon, not a sprint. So the city manager committed to open and transparent opportunities for our community to speak into the project, whether it's through study sessions in this building or with the planning commission, we need to take them up on that opportunity. After one of the study sessions, I was able to talk to the developer. They had emphasized that their project will only be successful if there is strong community engagement into it. So we've got City Hall wants a community to be heard to have a good project, we've got the developers want the citizens to be heard to have a good project. Those are the two outcomes that we need. Our community just needs to be engaged.
Thank you. Devin?
Nope, stole all my talking points. No, but public access, public access, public access. I guarantee you, nobody in these chambers or in this building disagrees with public access on the waterfront. It will absolutely be part of the development, I do not doubt it at all. I've been following this project since its inception a few years ago. As just a public citizen, I've been attending charrettes and design events, and it has been so exciting. I understand that there are some things that need to be shored up and figured out, but as Mr. Schulte says, we, we need to be engaged, and we need you and the citizens to come and, and be part of that dialogue. And it's a two-way dialogue, and we need both people involved, and so, public access one more time.
Thank you. Our next question is, the City of Holland and the Holland Board of Public Works recently renewed and updated its community energy plan. Do you support this plan? What would you suggest to make Holland more sustainable, carbon-neutral city? We're going to start with Ryan.
To be perfectly honest, I'm pleading ignorance on this one. I don't know that I've read the plan yet, and so I would decline to comment at
And so I would decline to comment at this point, so.
Thank you. Then we have Benjamin.
Yeah, I also have not, not looked at or read this plan. I let people that are experts in that field do that. I, I, I think I'll go back to a sustainability aspect though. And I do think our, our power plant is highly efficient. I, I don't know that many people realize it, but our, our power plant is the greatest money-making generating, generating unit that Holland has. I, I think they generate 125 million dollars a year. Their operating costs are also the greatest as well, north of 100 million dollars. But it, it's a great run organization unit. The other thing, I, I remember Schulteys mentioned this earlier. The snow melt runs off of that. So there's steam and gas turbines that are cooled by water. That then goes into the street to cool down the water and also to heat up the streets. So I think that's really cool. And I do think we have competent people in place for that.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. I think this kind of echoes back to the climate in economic development question that we had a little earlier. But I think anything that brings awareness about how much power we consume, both as individuals, as individual families, as the board of public works and as a city. And anything that fosters responsible, creative solutions to consuming less is a, is really where we're all going. And we've all kind of now had that come to Jesus moment. We're all going to have to pitch in and make it, make ourselves, make our home life and make our city more carbon neutral. And it is all of our responsibility. I love seeing that the city is taking a leadership role on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, so if, if you might have forgotten, the long-term plan is starting to come to fruition for near-term win, right? The fiber initiative that is years old, right? We're on the cusp of having a high-speed internet access for all of the city. That shouldn't be understated. The price point of that is extremely cheap. If you shop some of the markets, you'll probably draw the same conclusion, right? So that's something that BPW is doing for us. They're not just a power company. Every time that we see a road torn up and traffic diverted, it's in part tied to their long-term plan. So I think that the, the plan is in the right direction, absolutely. I think it needs to continue, continue to be supported to ensure that we don't walk back any of the important initiatives that they're working on.
Thank you. Devon.
Thank you. Our long-term energy plan is incredibly comprehensive and I'm sure you have a lot of numbers to prove that. It is incredible and it is honestly leading the way. I'm just really proud of it and I, I support it going forward and I support its evolution and growth. But BPW, I, you know, I do appraisals all across Western Michigan and the, the services that we get for the prices that we pay are outstanding. And we need to be grateful for that. And I know that it's hard sometimes when you see the bill. But we're doing a lot of great things and I just encourage us to keep doing that and move in that direction.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm going to surprise Devon and tell him that I haven't read the energy plan. So I'll have to wait. If I, I'll devote myself in the same way I do to budget if I get elected, okay?
Thank you. Our next question is some of the city's issues are regional as well as local. How would you propose to address some of these issues that are not completely local? We're going to start with Benjamin.
Yeah, so, so growth is definitely regional. I think I touched on earlier that Ottawa County is the fastest growing county in the state of Michigan and, and that growth affects all of us. I, I think it's very important to, to work with our other cities and counties. I'm going to take a drink because otherwise I'm about to cough. Working together is hard sometimes. I mean, there's, there's county leaders, there's, there's other cities that, that I, I don't necessarily see eye to eye, but I think bringing that unity and working together and celebrating that diversity is an important thing. I think there's an opportunity to, to work with surrounding areas on our growth. The city of Holland can't house all the residents that are going to be living here in the next 10 years. I especially think working with Fillmore Township down south to partner with some resources that we have to offer and also using some of their land resources as well.
Thank you, Kim.
I guess what I would start out with is collaboration, cooperation and transparency. We don't exist in a vacuum. We require the assistance of our county partners, our state partners and beyond. So we're not going to get anywhere in terms of some of the bigger issues that aren't completely within our city of Holland purview. But through collaboration, exchange of ideas, maybe even some thoughtful argument in between the different administrative bodies, we're going to get somewhere. We can't exist without it. I think most importantly though, is that we need to respect the process of this collaboration. We need to really work together and we need to keep our eye on the ball. I mean, we've got real problems that might come up as we grow. We can't be distracted. We need to work together and be serious about where we want to go and how we want to get there as a city, a county and a state. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
So our city's draft master plan outlines key partnerships outside of the city. So quick plug, if you haven't read it, 160 pages of fun. Go to the city's website, read it, scan through whatever your desire. Leave a comment for the city so that they can consider your input. Right, but I think that more importantly, our culture will define how successful we are in working with communities outside of the city of Holland. If we find ourselves difficult to work with, then those types of things will be a challenge. But if our cultural, cultural is one of collaboration, then we'll be successful in working with our partners outside of the city limits. Thanks.
Thank you, Devon.
Another one of those questions that makes me sound like I have no idea, no, no original thoughts after everybody says it so well. We do, we need to be working with other municipalities. I often do feel a sense sometimes of, well, that's going to be something that happens in the townships or that's, that can happen in the townships. That'll be the township's problem, et cetera. And we need to be working with them so that, so that there is a seamless communication between the two parties and that we're always working towards a common goal. And maybe defining those goals is the first step. I'd love to see that happen with all the surrounding municipalities.
Thank you. Mike.
Thank you again. As I understand it, as a city council member, I wouldn't have responsibility for interactions beyond the city. But I understand that the mayor and the city manager both have those responsibilities. So I would fill a support role, as I often have in, in industry. I'm a good researcher. I get data. I give it to people and allow them to use that data to the best of their ability. And I understand that a lot of that is done through the Makatawa Area Coordinating Committee.
Thank you. Ryan.
So to pick one thing out, affordable housing. So obviously we were landlocked here and it's going to be imperative that we work with our neighbors to try to get people into a home. Affordable housing is a tough, tough subject. I sit on the board for the Lake Shore Home Builders Association as their vice president. And we have regulation. We, we, well, one, we have demand. We have a great place that people want to come live. That's driving the cost of, of a house. My home has skyrocketed in, in value over the last 11 years. But we also have regulation that keep our builders from being able to build a home that is affordable. And I think that's a, Governor Schneider moved the code promulgation board to a couple bureaucrats and took it out of the hands of people that are directly impacted by the decisions that are made in the increased regulation in building a home. So I think it'd be great if we returned that to the builder, to the developer and getting a board set up that could potentially lower the regulation to allow for a less expensive home.
Thank you. We have two more questions in your closing statements. So if you can shorten your answers, we'll get through it and get out of here on, on time as we promised. The next question is an ice skating rink is being built downtown in the midst of accompanied street water main work and snow melt installations. Do you support this effort? Kim.
Thank you. I went to the meetings that talked about the plan for the ice skating rink and it really is, I, I think it's a lovely community endeavor. Also, there has been a very generous endowment to get that project started. So, I mean, I, who doesn't love an ice skating rink? I think one of the concerns though, that I've heard expressed to me is that we have all these wonderful things in Holland that attract everybody from other places, but we Hollanders support it, sustain it through our tax revenue. But other communities get to enjoy it. So I think that there will be a bit of a balance there to make this beautiful ice skating rink and its surrounding property accessible to everybody, but sustainable through contributions that kind of spread it around a little bit. I don't have the answers for it. I'm just saying that that is something that as we move through this process, that is something that's concerning to my constituents.
Thank you, Michael.
The short answer is yes. I mean, who wouldn't like a ice skating rink outdoor in the wintertime? Some things to highlight though, infrastructure smartly is being addressed before we actually place an ice skating rink. I think that's a win for the city of Holland, well thought out. I think that it's tough to determine how we're going to measure success on this one. Is it, it's a big investment from the community and what's the return on investment for our community? So I think that a similar model to maybe the aquatic center where city residents get some type of reduction on admission, things like that. We need a nod to the city residents that someone get a front-of-the-line privilege for flipping the bill for a project like this. Thanks.
Thank you, Devon.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're all pretty excited to have something to do in the winter. Something that, it's a, it's a long time here. So I, I am fully behind it and I think it's really exciting. But, you know, we do have to also consider all these things that go into it, which I know are being considered. But I'm really excited for it, so.
Thank you, Mike.
It would be me after Devon. Okay. Do I support it? Well, that's a difficult question because one of my concerns is budget, okay? And as I consider the budget, I'm very thankful for willing donors who want to contribute to the city and, and make it a more beautiful place and more welcoming place. However, my concerns are the budget. Can it, can it leave us without debt, okay? Increased debt. We have some debt on the civic center. We will have debt on the ice rink, I believe. I, I know there's been significant fundraising. But just for example, concessions are projected to, and I'm not an expert, okay? But projections are expected to get the concessions $25,000 a month. That seems rather bold to project 25,000 a month for concessions.
Thank you. Ryan.
I don't like ice skating. I just want to be different, so. No, I, I mean, obviously when you go to places like what's being proposed, it would be fun and beautiful or your kids would love it. How, the issue I have is one, let's not get too far ahead of ourselves with growth. Like Mr. Schulteys, we've got the civic center that's climbing. You know, we're coming out of a pandemic. It's looking positive. I love that the council voted to put it back out, put an RFP out and have multiple people bid on the management of that, that building. I think that was a wise decision. My fear is that, like I said, if you, great, we get a donation and we build this thing, but who's responsible for the ongoing maintenance and, you know, and then the projections on what we're going to bring in, you know? I don't know, you know, that's kind of up in the air and that's something that, you know, you'd really have to lock in. Where is this being done? You know, is there historical precedent for that amount of money to come in, you know, per month? There's a lot there, so.
Thank you, Benjamin.
My wife and I ice skated right before we got engaged in Grand Rapids though. So I can propose again. That'd be great. Yeah, no, I think it's a cool, cool project. I think anything that can get my teenage daughters potentially off their phone, out there interacting, winter can be a depressing time. I, I do echo the stewardship concerns of, of just let's, let's be honest about what this is going to cost operationally and, and decide whether we can accept that or not. I know there's also a rec center being proposed five years out. I think it's a $20 million cost. So there's a lot of cool things happening. But if you look at the projected financials, our, our reserve financials go down along with it. But having a young family like I do, we love what's happened at Window on the Waterfront there with that nature scape. We love public places. That's a big reason why we live here.
Thank you. Our last question, and this is a simple yes or no, so we can get to our closing statements, is have you signed any pledges or promises or have allegiances to other groups besides the constituents you are asking to allow you to represent? We're going to start with Michael.
No, and nor will I.
Thank you. Devon?
No, none.
Mike?
No.
Ryan?
Nope.
Benjamin?
No.
And Kim. Thank you.
No.
Every time. That's the last question. And there are many more. All, all of you submitted, not all of you, but a lot of questions were submitted. We had no way of getting through all of them. We combined a lot of them to try and come up with a common theme. But thank you again. We're going to move to the closing statements of each candidate and we're going to go in reverse order. So we get to start with Ryan.
First off, thank you to the League of Women Voters. This has been great tonight. I absolutely love Holland. I have spent the last 26 years here. I've got to spend my childhood here and now my adult life. And my wife and I, like I said, we live in the heights and we drove by the cemetery the other day and we thought we should pick a spot there because we're going to die here, you know? And so I, I covet your vote. Like I said, I think this is a tough call on the at-large seat because you have two really great people that genuinely love the city and want to do something great, uh, sitting on the board and, and, you know, listening and learning and growing together. I, I have, I've sat on a few boards in town. I, I manage, you know, a $9 million budget at my business. And beyond that though, this is about people, you know, and doing what's right by people. And that is something that I've embodied as a, you know, from a child and it was raised to look out for others. And so I hope you'll consider me for that.
Thank you. We're now going to Mike.
Thank you all for your attention. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters for this event and thank you to all the candidates. As I've already said, as a member of city council, I want to build a stronger, safer Holland where all can thrive. I commit to protecting your beliefs and respecting your values. I will protect you, the taxpayer. I will ensure healthy neighborhood growth and support public safety. So if you live within Ward Four, in short, vote for Mike Short. And if you live outside of Ward Four, you can be an influencer. Ask your friends who live within Ward Four, in short, to vote for Mike Short.
Thank you. Devon.
Thank you so much, everyone, for putting this on and thank you for being here. This is an incredible, incredible opportunity to engage with, you know, your community. And we need this, we need more of this. We need more people at, at meetings, the stuff that might be, seem a little boring, but we need your input. And none of this works without the community's input. So I thank you all for being here and I encourage you to encourage others to be engaged and have their voices be heard because I know that everyone that sits up here now and everyone that will sit up there wants to hear your voice. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Michael?
I'd be honored to have your vote. You expect representation that's open, transparent, and candid. I'll be that for you. You expect representation that does their homework and understands the needs of Holland. I'll be that for you also. You expect representation that digs into the details about what's going on in Holland. I'll be that for you also. You expect representation that makes themselves available and that listens to our community. I'll be the, both of those for you. Vote Schulteis. I'd be honored to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing us this opportunity to introduce ourselves to you. Thank you for being here and being interested. Obviously, our participation, all of these fine folks that are putting themselves out there to run for office, that's a huge commitment. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, and I think we, as Hollanders, will benefit from any one of these gentlemen that are up here, and of course, from me too. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for your interest in getting involved, and I'm going to thank you in advance for your vote. I am here to listen to you. I am here to learn about what's important, and I am here to be an advocate for you. So I hope that you see fit to allow me a spot to participate on city council, and again, I thank you for your time and your interest.
Happy birthday, Kim Rowan.
Thank you. Thanks.
And Benjamin?
I just want to quick say, Mike, thanks for keeping it short. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to all the candidates for being willing to run for city, city council, and thank you to everyone attending. It's encouraging to see so many people who care for the City of Holland. Holland has a lot of exciting things happening. I'm excited about the opportunity to access more waterfront in the city. I want to make sure that this benefits Holland's citizens and does not become privatized. Ottawa County is the fastest-growing county in Michigan. Housing of all types are needed. We will need more jobs and infrastructure to handle the growth. When we move back after living in Africa, we long to build community here. You see, in Zambia, you live outside and you sleep inside. It also doesn't snow there. We have 24 houses on our street, and we know each of those neighbors. I commit to listening, engaging, and telling the truth. I sincerely love this community. Thank you for your time and attention here tonight. I am asking for your vote in Ward Six.
Thank you. And it takes a lot for a candidate to prepare for a forum, to explain who they are and what they think, and so now's the time to, to applaud and thank them for. We also wish to thank the audience. It takes a lot to get out of your comfortable homes and come out to a meeting to talk about civics and democracy and things that are important to us, so thank you. If you submitted a question for this forum and we didn't answer it, we apologize, but there was no more time than 15 questions tonight to get through six candidates. So I highly encourage you to contact the candidates in your, your area and ask them directly your specific question, and they will do their best, I'm sure, to, to talk with you. So I would like to turn the forum back to our president, Barb Ferguson.
You were a great audience, very attentive, and thank you to the candidates for all of your insight. We hope that you, as voters, have gained insight into what the candidates believe, what their plans are, and that it will help you when you vote. You can learn more about these candidates and other candidates by vote, by visiting vote411.org. Candidates have all responded to questions about their candidacy on vote 411. We'd like to thank the City of Holland also for providing the space for this forum and assisting with the technology. A reminder that the video of this forum will be available on our website and YouTube channel in a few days. Copyright ownership of the recordings resides with the League of Women Voters. The candidates and their supporters cannot use the video recording of the forum, portions of the recording, or any audio or video clips for political advertising or other purposes without the written permission of the League of Women Voters. Most of all, remember to vote on Tuesday, November 7th. Polls open at 7:00 and close at 8:00. And all voters in Michigan have the option of voting by absentee, and those ballots will be available later this week, so you can vote soon. For more information on requesting an absentee ballot or confirming your voter registration, you can go to vote411, check at your local clerk's office, or go to michigan.gov/vote. And also, our website has information. So again, thank you for attending tonight's forum. We really appreciate that you were here. Another round of applause.
Thank you to our moderator.
And the panel, who are doing such a great job of moderating.
Thank you to our moderator. Thank you.